All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Everybody please stand for the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. By way of public announcements, the public is hereby advised that the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. There was an executive session of the Board in the high school on 4/18 prior to the work session for the purposes of discussions regarding professional support and administrative staff regarding the closure of Audubon Elementary School and other building level personnel determinations. Attendants, all are present except for Mr. Phillips. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Zerby for recognition of speakers and guests.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, there are four presentations. We have the school officers' update. Dr. Sinovic is with us and his -- other presenters are on their way. And there's a transportation update, a textbook update, and a budget update. I'd like, if at all possible, if we could do the transportation update first, and we'll ask Dr. Harney and members of the IU to come forward. There should be a presentation or handout at your table. It's this caller here.
I do. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to two folks that are really the lead in our management team in transportation now. These two folks come from the IU. Jerry Rankin and Donna DiMillo are our two leads that are getting us through a lot of our work that we're doing in transportation, so I'm going to turn it over to them, and they're going to give a presentation as to the status of where we are right now with our transportation project.
Hi, I'm Jerry Ryan King. I've been with the IU for three years now. I'm a program administrator for support services, which means I wear a lot of hats, one of them being transportation. My associate is Donna Di -- oh, no, mess it up. DiMillo. She's been with the IU close to 20 years, all in the transportation department, so she is the expert onboard. I'm not really sure what you expected tonight, but I just thought I'd introduce to us our goals, and any questions that you guys have, I'll be willing to answer for you. So we have created a team -- wow, I don't even need my glasses. We've created a team of experts consisting of Bus Boss, which is your software company, First Student, your transportation company, Donna and myself, and veteran drivers who have been Methactin drivers for quite a few number of years and live in the community. Our first step is, with the closing of your school, we decided we will take an analytical look at all your runs, all your bus stops, keeping safety first and trying to streamline the processes. And our goal is to have a very smooth opening of the 1718 school year. At this point in time, the responsibilities of the group is that Bus Boss is doing most of the -- they ran on some of the routes with the veteran drivers. They're analyzing the runs. They are responsible for rolling over your student database, and they will be sending out the notifications of what student goes to what bus stop. Thereafter, First Student will be in charge of just new students registering in the district, any kind of minor changes, and they will be the first direct point of contact for administration and for parents' concerns. Our role, as I see it, is to support the whole entire operation. At this point in time, our major goal is to be the project administrators. Donna has been the lead in that and has attended all the weekly meetings with Bus Boss and First Student. We're making sure they're staying on track, staying on the timeline, and that everybody stays focused. And we hope to provide guidance and oversight as issues may arise. Down the road, once we're up and running, I see that our goal, our position in this team is to review the monthly invoices, to make sure our billing is correct, to assist your business office in state reporting, to assist in any kind of audits that may come up, whether it be with the state or with your private auditors. And we will be onsite to provide office support and backup for First Student as needed. Any issues that cannot be handled quickly, that need to be elevated, that need some more attention, will be elevated to Donna and myself to handle. So at that point, I'll take any questions.
I'll start. This time I have a call. So the first critical piece is reviewing all the bus stops out there.
Correct.
And making adjustments when appropriate. Is the process going to then communicate those to the families and then give them a timeframe of giving you feedback to say that makes sense or that doesn't make sense?
Well, as they're analyzing this runs and the stops, they're using the veteran drivers that have been in Methactin School District for a number of years and using their expertise. I don't know how much parent input would be taken. I mean, I -- you may be able to speak better to this since you've -- but my understanding is we're not in here to change everything right away. Obviously, with the school closing, boundaries are changing, and some stops are obviously going to have to change. Our goal is for a smooth start of the school year and to not ruffle feathers.
Okay. Secondly, from a monthly invoice perspective, you're going to be overseeing that. Are there going to be some budget numbers that you're going to be benchmarking against to send up any red flags from an invoicing perspective?
So my expert here has been analyzing our invoices for 19 years. So what we look at is that we're being charged what should be charged, that the mileage that we're being charged is the correct mileage that's on that run, that there's no extras, there's no blips. I'm assuming we can go back and look at past invoices and compare that for you. If you wanted something like that, we could do an analysis for you halfway through the year, at the end of the year, whatever. Again, the goal for this year is to have smooth-running transportation routes. Efficiencies, we're going to look into further down the line for cost savings.
Their role is actually contract maintenance, as far as making sure that they're performing the contract as they're supposed to. So as far as monitoring the billing, monitoring all the things that they said they're monitoring as far as mileage and fuel and all those types of things, their job is to make sure that they're working, that First Student's working within the confines that they're doing.
Okay. All right. Scott, you want to go?
Yeah, just, I have three quick things. I think it would be helpful, and I can't speak for the whole board, but it would be helpful if you lay out a timeline of key milestones and what you plan to accomplish within those milestones leading up to, you know, the smooth start. That would be really helpful, because then as a board, it'll trigger us to at least pulse where we are against the timeline.
So right now, the runs will be -- Friday is going to be, I believe, our final meeting on the stops and the runs.
Right, it's supposed to be.
It's supposed to be. For the majority of the school, the next -- the first week in May, we are all going, we all, Donna and myself, First Student has two people going. We are going to have training on the software so that then we learn it. And I believe during that week of training, we will actually be routing the non-public runs, just so we really get a hands-on feel for how it works. The goal is to have it up and running and notification going out by mid-August.
Yeah, I get that, but if you would just kind of think of those milestones and lay them out for us with what you intend to accomplish and then what you accomplish, so we know if there are gaps.
Certainly, I could certainly do that.
I just think, for me, it would be beneficial to understand the process steps that we're taking to, you know, there's no secret, we've been horrible the last two years at this game. So, you know, we need to make the improvement. But for us as a board, we're kind of neophytes, other than the complaints that we get, or we're customers of the situation. So, you know, seeing you guys as professionals, the process of, you know, we need to do this by certain dates, we need to train, and then --
And we do have that.
Did everybody get -- I just think that'd be helpful, so maybe Bob, they can send it to you, and you can get it to Dr. Zerby, and they can circulate it amongst the board. I think along with that, and you kind of cover some of these things, but I got to kind of fish a little bit for you. You call it responsibilities, I kind of say priorities. So what are the priorities from your perspective in order of priority? So, you know, there's some things that become wishes and some that are priorities, and, you know, we need to know, I think, as a board, what are those priorities? And then it leads into my last thing, you know, what are the barriers for your success? So where we need to help facilitate by working with Dave or Bob or whatnot, then, you know, it gives the board at least a pulsing capability to say, you know, here's what you laid out, here's what you got done, here's what you said was important, so that we can try to help that situation, because I think we're all in in trying to have a smooth opening next year.
Yeah. And I had, obviously, a little bit of reservations in this joint effort, and I have to tell you, working with this team, I really do feel that it -- I'm very hopeful that there are no barriers that are going to come up. I believe that we are all communicating. We are saying on the timelines, and we do have -- and I apologize, I didn't even think of bringing that tonight. We do have a timeline laid out. I can get that to Dr. Harney, and you can see that.
Perfect. That'd be great. Thank you.
The goals are to get the kids to school safely and hopefully without problems, and in a perfect -- that's never going to happen. We all know that.
Yeah, there's a million little goals that build up to that, though.
Yes.
Right? So, I mean, we don't want to micromanage it. You guys are professionals, that's why we brought you on board. But I do think there's probably a lot of concern across the board, not of view, but of the situations from the past that, you know, make us all a little squeamish, that, you know, what's the next pothole, so to speak, that we're going to hit, right?
I would just like to say that I think, too, we are trying, and we're finding that it's been easier than we were anticipating, keeping the lines of communication.
Sure.
Really open with First Student and us working as a team. And we see that as a positive thing right now, and I think if we can continue to do that, we're working so closely together that, I mean, we think it's going in the right direction.
Great. Thank you all for your help.
Just a couple of quick questions. You mentioned the veteran drivers. Do you know approximately how many drivers were brought into the process?
Three were -- no, three, I believe, that were on the -- ran those runs with First Student, just check on the dangerous stops and all that.
Bus Boss was involved in that also, right?
Bus Boss.
Yes.
Bus Boss and three veteran drivers.
The drivers were also at every meeting I've seen so far.
And they've been to every meeting to discuss this.
And it's one of those, I believe it's one of those drivers that is also going to be trained on the software with us.
Right.
Okay, so three drivers. You mentioned as the second bullet here, with the closing of the school, the team is evaluating all routing. Who is encompassing that part of the team?
So that would be your drivers from First Student, so that's kind of two-in-one. I kind of, they were Methactin, obviously, drivers, so they're community members. And Bus Boss, who is your software company. And then they're the ones that are actually going out, and then we sit, and we're in the meetings, taking the minutes, just making sure everybody's staying on track, listening, and making sure that nothing sounds totally outrageous. But Bus Boss is the expert in the routing, so we are letting them take the lead on that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure about that, because, you know, Orbit and Bus Boss has been, you know, working with us in the past, and we've had the problems. So we want to make sure that we're adding new people and new faces to the team.
Yes, which is why the first week in May, we're spending learning the software, so that, I don't want to say it out loud, but if something happens, we will be on hand, and we will be totally trained in the software. There will be four of us here in August, doing whatever we need to do to make sure that nothing happens like it did last year.
Okay. And you had mentioned that Donna has been at all the meetings so far.
Yes.
Is there anything that has kind of popped out at you from the beginning that, you know, some concerns that may or may not have been resolved already? Anything that's?
I really don't see anything right now, anyway. Like I said, we seem to be really working well together. They seem to be in line with the timing of what they're doing with the routing and, you know, the evaluations of the stops and the closing of your schools. So right now, I think it's going well.
What makes me feel comfortable, too, is that our deadline is August 15. And with the Methactin not starting school until after Labor Day, I really do think we're going to have the drivers running these runs before the students are on the bus.
Okay. And the last question here might be actually more for Dr. Zerby and the administration here, is the second part of the responsibilities is the review of the monthly invoices and assistive business office with state reporting. Is that currently what Mr. McCall is going through? Is that one of his tasks that he's doing currently?
He's doing some of that work.
Moving forward, will that become mostly done by the IU and just an overview by the business?
Yeah, we were doing -- Mr. McCall was doing the back work, and then going forward, the IU will take that over.
They will take that over. So that will be one thing off of the plate of our business, obviously, except for slight overview, I'm assuming. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Nice to see you outside of the other school. Thank you. And it's nice -- and excuse our questions, but because we, you know, we kind of made possibly, you know, we want to make sure.
Absolutely.
So it's nice that you're here, and thank you for arranging that. Most of my questions were answered, but I had two. It talks about direct point of contact for administrators and parents is First Student. I've been hearing, I went to a home and school meeting for Brenda the other day, and I hear there's still issues with communication from First Student. And sometimes the parents don't tell till, you know, so that's part of the problem. But if there's a problem, like we hear problems, who do we, do we go, does the district go to you and say First Student's not communicating well? How does that work with a third party?
So, just for clarification, on the Methactin website, under transportation, Amy, who is the location manager for First Student, and Donna will both be listed with direct links to emails and their cellphone numbers. So we will always be accessible. The reason we put first point of contact is just the way we do our business now, because we obviously serve Montgomery County, 22 school districts with a large transportation. Sometimes it gets caught in, especially when it's something urgent, for you to call us, for us to call First Student, for First Student to get the bus driver on the radio, you're losing time when you're talking about someone's precious cargo. So we put first point of contact for First Student, but we are here. We will be answering. And problems that are consistent or need to be elevated, that's why I said First Student, first point of contact, we will be the second point of contact, and hopefully, your problem solvers.
And then I know, and I appreciate that we want to focus on the elementary, for sure, being, you know, with that. But because of the changes of routes, there were routes messed, there were routes that weren't being, we thought we were going to be efficient, and everything was going to be great, and we didn't have the time that we have now. So all the routes are being looked at, too.
Correct.
Okay, because there's some other issues.
Yes. Now, this was just a good opportunity with the closing of the school to say, hey, let's clean the slate clean. Actually, I believe they started not even with last year's routes, but previous years, and then started to look at what's hazardous, what's not hazardous. We had some crazy things, like buses turning around in cul-de-sacs, which is a huge safety no-no. So they're the kind of things that are being looked at.
So I also attend the home and school meetings, and some of the things I hear have to do more so with substitute bus drivers, I think, than the experienced and regular bus drivers that we have. Will you be involved at all with First Student with helping to repair some of the problems that occur when there is a substitute bus driver? They have things like not knowing the route, not being able to handle the children that are on the bus in a proper fashion, simply because the children sometimes are helping them to go where they need to go. There is a significant issue still, I think, this year. I've heard it at several meetings this month. So what would be your relationship with the First Student management, particularly with regard to substitute bus drivers?
Sorry. My understanding is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the part of this project is the upgrade of the software program. So substitute drivers should be running the same runs as the regular drivers, and I think in the past, it has not been that way. So the upgrade with the Bus Boss system is that there will be a run that is driven by anybody, Sam, Joe, Sally, anyone.
So would that run be on paper? Is that what they would be using?
Yes.
So I think that's one of the issues, is that the substitute bus drivers really can't use the paper while they're driving. And so it's a challenge, I think, from the standpoint of education of the, or taking enough time to teach them the route, so that they do know the route before they actually go out on it. And I think this is a big challenge for us, because you may not see that substitute driver much before the time that they have to drive a bus. But there has to be some way of dealing with it, because I do know that children have become very upset with circumstances that they find themselves with. They get comfortable with a good bus driver that they know who knows them, and then the issue becomes when a substitute bus driver is there. And so what kinds of mechanisms are you thinking about for dealing with that kind of situation?
I can tell you that the bus driver shortage is something that's just not Methactin's issue. I mean, this is across the whole industry. We could help, I mean, if asked, we're willing to step in and help First Student train and do anything that they ask of us. I mean, that's why I said, we're here to help. But at this point, it is First Student and their hiring practices and their employees.
Part of the issue, too, is that some of the, a lot of the routes have been personalized.
Personalized, there you go.
Personalized by bus drivers, so that what's in our Bus Boss system isn't necessarily what that bus runs. So the new routes are going to have to be followed, they're going to be turn-by-turn directions that the, I think the directions are going to actually match on a regular basis what the route is supposed to be running. Because our bus drivers actually knew better ways to do things than what they were given. So they chose to make some changes and probably save us some time and some calls from parents, but we can't have that in the future. So in the future, the turn-by-turn directions are going to be what everyone has to drive from that bus. I think that'll help a little bit. But the other piece is really the staffing issue, that I am going to have these folks have to take a look at on a regular basis to see what First Student is doing as far as trying to increase their substitute pool. Because if you have a substantial substitute pool, you can get them out, okay? Go practice these runs, and you can get them out to do other things, instead of just kind of getting them in and going, hit the ground running kind of a thing, without much training on specific routes.
So to, I guess, dovetail off of what Brenda was asking about, if we have drivers who are customizing routes, I understand we want to keep them using what's in the software, but I also don't like the idea of telling the driver, you know, who's been driving these roads for 15, 20 years, no, you have to follow these directions. Is there a way for driver input to be fed into the system?
Which is why we're using the veteran drivers to create the routes.
Okay, so.
But so, and I believe, I mean, we've only been to one bus driver meeting, but First Student is open, and I, that's why we're being trained, that if someone comes up and says, or even mid-year, what if something happens and Morris Roads closed for six months? That's why we're being trained to make those little changes in the software system, so it's still in Bus Boss, and the route is changed correctly, not by Joe thinking it's a better way to go down Road A into the Road B. So yes, we will hear them. They are on the road, they are the experts. But I think the fail in the past has been, it's not been put into the system.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it is a dynamic process, so that if the drivers, you know, midway through the year
Yes.
can give you the feedback or give whoever at Bus Boss the feedback, and we can update the routes accordingly.
The feeling I got from the meetings were that after these are put out there, the drivers will be doing practice runs and everything, and will have input. And it won't be too late to change anything. So they will be able to change things if they need to. But once they are in place, then we need those drivers.
Because it is a domino effect. If he changes and this bus stop gets dropped off five minutes early, then you're going to another bus stop five minutes early. And it's a cumulative domino effect that then can, especially when you tier your bus runs, high school then goes to elementary school that goes to, so, yes.
No, that makes sense. So you had said you started doing the analysis of the routing with the elementary schools. The rollover of the student data, is that being done soon?
I'm going to look to the expert over there.
I know that that's historically been done around this time of year, so I want to make sure that we're kind of ahead of the game.
The rollover to student data doesn't take place until later in the year, so it'll be closer to June, where we roll over up to our new student information system. And then all of the routes, not routes, but the system would be loaded at Bus Boss. This year, we're looking to, again, integrate Bus Boss with Power School. So when the rollover happens in our new student information system, it'll automatically happen within Bus Boss as well, changes will be dynamic in nature moving forward. That's why, you know, we look to finalize, and as we get new students to come onboard in the summer time, and they would get routed, and then everything is on that August deadline.
Okay, so that will give us enough time to be doing that migration and making sure that the two software programs are communicating properly by doing it in June?
Yes.
Given that we're looking at these routes kind of from scratch, if we are noticing that there are going to be changes to a substantial number of stops, this is, I guess, more of a question for you, for Dr. Zerby. If we can send out an interim notification to families that we will be changing, I mean, it doesn't have to be by mail, it could be through, you know, email or phone or however we do it, but let families know, because there are going to be a lot of elementary families that are dealing with changing schools as it is, to let them know that bus stops can be changing as well. The more communication we can give them, the better.
That's a good suggestion. It's a conversation that we've already had. We've got to wait till we get the finalization, and then we're going to determine what that overall impact will be, and then determine how we best communicate the families and the community.
A couple more questions. So I understand that First Student is currently looking for a new dispatcher for Methactin. Is that going to create any obstacles or impact our process at all?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, First Student's a national-wide company that I'm sure recruits every day. I don't foresee that being problematic at all.
I guess I was thinking more in terms of the fact that there was a lot of history in that position, so I just wanted to make sure that we're not losing anything in losing a person with a lot of knowledge, kind of making sure that that's on our radar. And the other question that I had is the August 15 deadline that you mentioned. How does that work with the timeline that we typically follow with the union in terms of putting the routes out to bid and allowing the senior drivers to get their first shot at them, and that whole process that we went through last summer? I seem to remember that being more the first week of August.
I don't have that in front of me, but you're right, that has to be critical to this. So the date that we're throwing out is this August 15 date. We're going to have to follow it this year. We did not follow it properly last year. We gave it to them late. It was not done the way we needed to do it. I will make sure that that piece is in place. So we do have to have at least substantial completion on everything else, so that the routes are something that the drivers will be able to know exactly what they are and can bid on them. So that process definitely has to be done properly this year, and we will assure that it's done properly.
And I think that would be ahead of the 15th. The 15th is like the mail the notices out to the parents date.
Yeah.
So I'm pretty certain that, so then we'll have the routes to the drivers prior to the 15th.
By the end of July was the original request.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we
Would be test-driving the runs.
Perfect. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, thanks for your presentation. A couple of things, just the comments and a couple of questions. There was a parent representation committee that we used, and I don't know if they've met with you guys, but, and I think it's really valuable to pull those people in who lived the experience last year. So I highly recommend, Dr. Harney, you pull them in for at least give those inputs. Second point was, we had, we have some issues around routing of private schools, so the next time you guys come back in June or July, like sort of an update of how we've resolved some of those issues around specifically the 10-mile radius issues that we have. Couple of comments on First Student. I, maybe Candy or Joe or somebody can provide insight, but I remember I, maybe Candy or Joe or somebody can provide insight, but I remember there was a big sell on First Student on what they could provide related to being able to track your son or daughter as they were routed through. There was this 3D that would give them the routing and not dealing with paper. There was a lot of sell.
Okay.
So from a perspective of where is First Student delivering on those tools and where we are, and I know that, I think Brenda and Scott looked at the contract at one point, if there's something there that we're not bearing the fruit of. The one thing I love seeing is that we're doing this route testing during normal hours and not middle of July.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
So it's really critical that we try to get those done during the school year when the buses are actually out and people are actually working for most of the summer. And then the other point is, if you have any recommendations or anything you need us to look at from a policy guideline about riders on a bus or if there's any concerns on that, please raise your flag on that and let us know earlier in the process. Thank you.
And to the last point, again, I think the first year is getting this up and getting it running. I believe thereafter, we are going to look at efficiencies, probably your policies. There have been a lot of questions where we've asked and it's kind of been, "We don't know." So that is something that absolutely in the future, we would love to work with you guys on.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you, Seidemar.
Next on the agenda, we have Dr. Sisnovik with the school officer's update. Dr. Sisnovik?
Yes, it is. Official for about a month, so. First official board meeting is Dr. Sisnovik. So good evening. I hope each of you had a nice Easter break. Tonight, I will provide you an update on the school officer program. This program has been in place for a little over two months now. Based on the feedback from administrators and staff, in addition to my own observations, all aspects of the program are going well and meeting objectives. I can commonly say at this point, our school officers are fully what we'll call Math Actonized, whereby they've been accepted by the students and staff and have become up to speed on our emergency management plan and many school procedures. Much of the short time they've been with us has been focused on building relationships, being visible both in the hallways and in classrooms, and using their collective 60-plus years of law enforcement experience to support our administration, our administrators and staff in a wide range of areas. They've become active leaders in our emergency response teams as well as our Safe School meetings. Finally, they've used their connections to help form stronger bonds between Math Acton and law enforcement agencies such as the Pennsylvania State Police. We look forward to continuing to further expand upon these successes for the rest of the year and instituting the second phase of this program, which is the augmented services next year. As you're aware, due to funding constraints, we were not able to implement the additional security agents for after-school coverage beyond spring sporting events and other special occasions such as a prom. However, this will be resolved once we enter the next school year's funding cycle. With all that said, it is my pleasure to introduce to you our two school officers, Officer Sheldon Sneed and Officer Thomas Mummy. And with them as well is the operation supervisor, Christopher Murray. I've asked him to share with you their background and where they're currently assigned and just a brief bio, so if you guys could come down and give a brief bio.
I'm presently the school officer at Arcola, and I cover Skyview and I cover the four other elementarys, Eagle Bowl, Arrowhead, Woodland, and Audubon. I've been out of, I'm a retired police officer for a little more than 36 and 1/2 years. I retired December of 2015 from the Lower Providence Police Department where I served 32 of those years. The last year, going on a year and a half, I've been working with U.S. Security Care Company, and they had me assigned to the Jack Barrack Hebrew Academy in Bryn Mawr last year for a good period of time. I even did a stint with the Jewish School of Lehigh in Allentown. More than that, I think I've adjusted well, getting along with the kids and the staff, and I think they're adjusting to me, so, thank you.
Good evening. Sheldon Sneed, I was a member of the Pennsylvania State Police for almost 29 years. My last assignment was I was station commander at the Avondale Barracks, which is, covers the lower half of Chester County. I've had other experience such as working at Swarthmore College, Montgomery County College. I am currently assigned to the Math Acton High School and the Worcester Elementary School. And I truly enjoy being around the young kids because I say they're the ones that keep me young. Thank you.
We are really grateful to have both Officers Sneed and Mummy. They are two outstanding candidates that exemplify what we would hope, what we were hoping to get out of this school officer program, so they're doing a great job. Their experiences beyond words, as you can imagine, from, you know, the many years that they've had in law enforcement. So with that, that concludes my update. I'll take any questions that you might have. If not, I'll gladly sit down.
Sorry. I have a question. And this, I probably could have asked at any point. I'm just taking advantage of it now since we're talking about the SRO program. How do the, I know I've always heard about whether it was these gentlemen or the gentlemen previously coming into the classrooms and the younger ones enjoying that, but how does the SRO officers deal, how are they involved with any bullying or things like that? When do they, I, when do the SRO officers get involved with students on a discipline basis versus an administrator? I don't know if that's a question we can answer now, but it is something I would like to discuss at some point at some committee meeting or something.
Sure. In the general sense, they're involved every day. They're involved with students every day and that's where the relationship building comes into play. They form relationships with students. As they are walking down the hall, they might see Billy not looking like he's on his A-game, take him aside, "Hey, what's going on?" And that's where that rapport and the constant visibility and association with all the students takes place. They're actively involved with all matters relative to, you know, student discipline or children that need maybe some guidance in that area. So they work on our Safe Schools teams, which talk about some of the challenges we might be seeing relative to bullying or something like that. So they're aware of individual students that they might need to keep an eye out for and maybe offer some better guidance. They're also part of, you know, discipline when need be and asked upon by the school administrator. So really, they're involved in all facets, not just from a disciplinarian standpoint. That's not what we were looking for out of this program. We're looking for some individuals here that could really provide some guidance to the youth.
That helps me, thank you. And they look way more intimidating than some, but they smile. I don't mean it in a bad way. Are they allowed to go on those buses and get some discipline on those buses if need be in a very appropriate way?
Yeah, I'll talk with Chris, their operation supervisor, about that and we'll see what we can do. But honestly, they're involved in all areas, so if it was deemed necessary, and I believe there were, there was an occasion where Officer Mummy had to actually, you know, step on a bus and say something earlier, a few weeks ago, he has done that and he will do that. They will do that in the future. But they are not intimidating. I'm telling you, they're the friendliest guys that you could probably, you could get. They just look intimidating right now for some reason.
Nothing wrong with that. And I will just, quick comment, I did like, I was worried about the car situation. I know that was my question.
Sure.
And I am happy with the presence of the car, just so. And I thought it was, it looked, another intimidating factor.
Yeah, and it's not really as, you know, intimidation is maybe part of it, but it's a deterrent, right? So it's a visible deterrent. And their presence is known by the staff, it's known by the students. The cars, you know, accentuate that when you pull in, so the program's been going very positively overall.
Just one quick question. You mentioned the, you know, being visible and building relationships is a big part of this. Is it more than just kind of walk in the hallways? Have we had any, you know, planned events where, you know, they're at the center of it where they have a chance to show the softer side of the SRO officer that, you know, in the past that our students have, you know, come to love the SRO officers and really like, you know, whether they're sitting at a lunch table with them or something like that? Are we doing those current events or are they planned in the future to build that?
That's just part of their daily assignments. They're constantly going to lunches. They're constantly interacting with kids in a non-disciplinarian, disciplinary format. Again, that's where you build those relationships and they'll start to open up and maybe share some things where they could offer some guidance and stuff like that. You know, for example, Officer Sneed was, last March was in Mr. Kissler's room and he did a presentation on various law enforcement items to their students. So, you know, they're being used in all different capacities, you know, beyond just, you know, what you would think a school officer would be just patrolling the hallway. That's not what we looked for. And that, when we were evaluating with USSC, who would be best fit in Math Acton, you know, we made sure we selected two individuals that would meet that mold.
Oh, great. That's the exact answer I was hoping to hear. Thank you.
Yep. Any others? Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. It was nice meeting you gentlemen. Appreciate you coming out tonight so we could put a face to the name. Thanks.
Next on the agenda is a textbook update. Dr. Grotona will present, I think she has a handout as well at your table. Dr. Grotona?
Do you want me to project it or do you? Okay, okay. You want me to go over there then? Okay. This has been posted to the agenda for this evening as well so that it can be seen on the website too. This is just a brief presentation to provide a reminder of the books on the agenda for approval at next week's meeting. I prepared a few slides to summarize the rationale for the recommendations as well as the costs and the professional development that will accompany the implementation. So in terms of the summary of recommendations, first of all, with Wonders: Balanced Literacy 2017, that would be for K through 5, this reflects the PA Core standards for ELA. The assessments are designed to provide information related to skill acquisition. It provides whole group classroom sets and differentiated reading opportunities, contains program additions for English language students as well as IEP students, and it provides a balanced literacy instructional approach. The Algebra I Glencoe reflects the PA Core mathematical standards, provides alignment with curriculum and resources in use at Skyview and Arcola, and provides the opportunity to strengthen Algebra I programming across grades 8 and 9. And then there are also three resources for the Honors English 12 Writing Fellows that are being recommended, and these selections meet the requirements for learning theory and practical application because that course is going to be a mix of both of those. And just as a reminder, as was pointed out previously, both the ELA in K5, actually in K6, and the Algebra I materials currently in use were purchased in 2008. And we know that our focus for the last couple of years has been on getting the right resources for math and strengthening math, especially at our K6 levels, and then we started to do some things with 7, 8. So we now have the opportunity, you know, to get the focus into literacy as we've started to do in the last year or so with the balanced literacy, but now to actually get those resources in our students' and teachers' hands. So we have had a public review of the materials. The materials have been available for anyone from the community to come out, peruse, leave comments or questions. We began putting those out on March 23 and they will remain out until next Tuesday, up until the end of the day next Tuesday before the vote. So as of today, there have only been two community members that have come in to review the materials and we have not received any comments specific to them. So again, it's, you know, as typical, they've been in the education center and they will remain there. We did actually have someone who came in toward the end of the day today for an appointment with someone who asked if they were going to be out yet because she wanted to come in and see them, so. So the budget, for the Wonders: Balanced Literacy, you see the cost of the textbooks reflected here. So to start with those, obviously they are the most expensive among the textbooks and the cost reflects what will be needed based on the projected number of students in classrooms for next year. So the cost at this point is $462,545 and change. And again, this is materials and six-year online access for approximately 2,040 students. The payment for that would be over the course of four years without interest. And we would pay the initial payment prior to July 1 of this year, and then for the next three years, it would be by July 31 of each of those three years. Just a note on that, since the materials were first brought to your attention with the total amount, the number has decreased quite a bit. And since the last time I presented to you, I believe at that point it was around 498,000. So through some material adjustments and talking with the company again, and we have been able to reduce that along with the shipping and handling by a little over $35,000, almost The Glencoe Algebra I books, $39,217 and change, and these would cover, these are class sets, they will cover 300 students in class sets. Students who would need to take the books home would certainly be able to take the books home. And then all of the students would have access to the online platform. That's for 450 students. And the cost of that will come out of the 2017-18 budget. Then there are three books, as I mentioned, for the Honors English Writing Fellows course for 12th grade students that was approved back in November. We expect 15 students in this course, and so each of these three books, the Bedford Guide for Writing Tutors, Tutoring Writing, and the St. Martin's Guide to Writing, would be for 15 students. And again, that would come from the 2017-18 budget. So the costs there are $352.35, $490.05, and $390.75. So the last couple of slides just speak to the implementation process to some extent and the supports that we, the professional development and supports that we want to put in place for implementing both the Wonders and the Glencoe. So first of all, for Wonders, the implementation is structured in a way to allow for a new system, new system being the new resources that these teachers would use, and for building new teams. So as the new teams come together in the schools, they will be able to do their planning out of how they best see fit in developing their lessons based on our curriculum, based on the resources that they'll have. We will be providing time for our teachers to collaborate about the implementation process of the new materials. The initial professional development will occur prior to the end of this school year. And then teachers will have the materials for summer planning. We have summer curriculum writing scheduled and budgeted for. The curriculum will then reflect the skills-based instruction so that we make sure that as we come back next year, teachers are aware as they're planning their lessons, they know what they're basing those. basing those lessons on. We are recommending a teacher on assignment for ELA, and as well as down the line, we'll be asking for the grade level liaisons again, as we did with math. Those were just people from the individual schools and grade levels who could be sort of conduits between the school and the TOA, and we would be asking for them throughout that initial year of implementation. We will have additional professional development to follow throughout next year at different times, in different ways, certainly at in services. We're looking mostly to do perhaps half-day and then again, allow teachers time for collaboration. We know that we'll also be doing follow-up with the math, so we don't want to forget about that piece. But we are, we've also been working with principals to identify times in their schedules where they would not have to have certain meetings perhaps where they could give that time back to teachers so that they would be able to get together if they needed to do more planning for the ELA and/or for the math throughout next year. So, we're working on exactly how that is going to look. And then we would also plan to have parent sessions for next year. These would not be like we've done with Math in Focus where we've had people from the company come out and do, but we would have like the teacher on assignment for ELA and those liaisons, or other teachers who just feel very comfortable with the instruction. They would actually give the information to parents, like just let them know what it is that they're doing, how they're using the materials, what they can do at home, et cetera. And then finally, just the implementation process for the Glencoe materials for Algebra I. Again, the professional development will be prior to the end of the school year. We will have the high school Algebra I teachers for half-day to get an introduction to the Connect Ed, which is a platform, an online platform for the series. The eighth grade teachers don't need that professional development because they actually had an introduction to it this year when we bought the Glencoe three books that they used for the Bridges course. So, then for the rest of that day, then we would have both the eighth and ninth grade teachers together for more of an in-depth look at the supplemental resources attached to Connect Ed that go with those, with the new materials. Teachers, again, will have their materials for summer planning. We will have time at the start of the 2017-18 school year for collaboration, and we'll again schedule in-service time for follow-up work. And that would be very focused in service trainings during the school year according to whatever the teachers' needs are. And so, I just wanted to give you that sort of summary of everything once again as you look ahead to next week when we ask for approval.
Are there any questions for Dr. Katona?
I just have a couple of questions. Great job on getting the additional $35,000 and change off the price. We appreciate that work. For years five and six, or for the, you know, for the extra, I mean, maybe it's not extra, maybe I'm just thinking of it this way, but we're paying over four years, but we have a six-year contract, so this $462,545 is the fee for the full six years, right?
Yes.
We don't pay any additional fees for access?
No.
Pre-pays on all access?
No. There, now, I mean, I can't guarantee you that we're never going to have to replace a book that students use or anything.
Yeah, yeah, not that. I'm just saying that the access for the whole six years is part of that.
Yes, it is for the six years. It is for the six years. And at the end of that time, we would see what, if we are continuing with that series at that time, we would then see, okay, what would the cost be, you know, per student to continue on with that?
Okay, for the access?
Yes.
And it doesn't make, I would imagine they don't, you can't pre-lock in a price for something like that for the renewal term for access? Does it make sure, does it make sense to even ask?
I did actually sort of have a conversation like that already. At this, at this particular time, I would say no, but I think that it's something that perhaps in a couple of years, if we're looking at, okay, we know that we're going to continue this for, you know, at least another two years past, at that point, you know, to be able to say, can you lock us in on something? I think we could go back then and ask about it.
Okay. And I'm assuming this might not be a question for you, but maybe you can answer this, Dr. Katona. The funds that need to be expended prior to 7-1 for this year, so the $115,000, $6,000, are they, is that in the budget? We've got that covered for this year?
It wasn't something that we budgeted for, so it's not a budgeted item. However, based on my projections on where we'll land this year, we're likely to have those funds available to cover this expenditure.
And if those funds aren't available, you'll take it from?
Well, it'll be, you know, as we get closer to looking at the May numbers, I'll have to make a recommendation at that time to tell you that it would likely have to come from the fund balance.
Okay. That's what I would have thought. I just figured I would, I would check. And then, you know, one last question, you know, we had this discussed, might have been at Finance Committee, Joe, you might have even asked this, but from an accounting perspective, since we're getting the materials, we're not getting all the online services for years, you know, the front years, but from, you know, an accounting perspective, the way we're purchasing this material, where we'll receive a lot of the books and whatnot ahead of time, are we okay? Did you check with Dennis that we can, we can transact this business this way?
Yeah, so I can tell you that, I think my original hope was that we would be able to show the expenditure in each of the four fiscal years, but after checking into this, the proper way to do this would be to debit the expense in the year of the purchase or that you're receiving the product, and then to credit cash for the first year, and then also then for the remaining credit alone account, and it would-
Prepay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Or some kind of, okay. All right, that was all I had.
Could I just follow up on that last accounting question? So, they're being purchased this year then, if you do this? This current school year, this current fiscal year, not next year?
That would be accurate.
Okay.
But you're not, you might be, you might not have to count it all for this year because they may not take, I mean, if they don't ship the entire supply of books until after July 1, you could split the baby probably from accounting because you don't need the books to arrive on site prior to July 1.
Well, you're right. We have to, we have to take, we have to debit the expense when we take possession of the materials. So, most of the, most of the materials will likely not be needed until after July 1, but the teacher resources are those that would be needed prior. So, I don't have, you know, I was just working on this this afternoon, but basically, what I'm telling you is that the full expenditure, once we receive the materials, is going to need to be debited.
Yeah, I got you there. It's just you might not have to recognize as much.
I need to look at what's the plan for the shipping and when that's all planned to arrive.
Yeah, if I were you, I would just tell them when you want to ship. That way, that way, that way your PO is very clear.
Yeah, I understand, but I need, I need to coordinate that with Dr. Katona to make sure that, you know, we're getting all the resources when the professional development is needed and so, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying the accounting part of that. I know that came up in policy, then finance, and now again tonight, so just as long as we're sure that we have that ourselves covered there. I appreciate it. And thank you too. I know I had some questions the last time around about, you know, do we really exhaust all possibilities and, you know, is this the best move? And, you know, Dr. Zerber did get back with some of the feedback and everything, so I greatly appreciate the follow-up with that, and thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Katona. The next presentation is a budget update, and I'll ask the board if they would take the seats in the first row.
We have a presentation here.
Yeah, we have a handout for you as well.
Oh, yeah, that one.
this presentation has been posted approximately about four o'clock today to the agenda, and I did provide the board a handout. Some of the wording may be small because, but it's allowed us to follow along. But it's a lot of paper, as you can see, and most of the slides are not going to be discussed here today because they are similar to the presentation that we had back in January when we approved the proposed preliminary budget. So, while I'll go through each slide, I may not speak about every slide. So, the first thing that I want to share with you is, is the timeline. And we want to look specifically, we're in, we're in April, and the dates I want to start with is May 10 on your far right-hand side. So, May 10, we'll be taking the budget, or what I'll consider the proposed final budget, to the Finance Committee for their review. We'll be bringing the, that same presentation or a adjusted one to the board at the, at the May 17 meeting, and then we'll be looking for your adoption on May 23 for the proposed final budget, which then gives us the opportunity to advertise and certify by PDE. Then in June, we'll see the final review by the Finance Committee, and then on June 20, we'll have a review of the final budget with the full board, and then we'll be looking for your adoption on the 27th of June. So, that talks us through the, through the timeline and the steps. If anything needs to be adjusted, I'll be coordinating that with the Finance Committee, but it is my hope that we come at the end of May with what is likely going to be the budget that the board would approve at the June meeting. If you go to the next slide, it talks about mission core values. The next slide talks about our strategic plan. The next slide, the board goals, and I'm just, I don't want to skip that one, but basically, provide leadership direction and resources to support the strategic plan, to exhibit transparent communications within the board and with the public while establishing standards, clear and consistent communication on fiscal matters of the district, and engage the community in ways that encourage positive interaction and development and public trust with open dialogue and community input. And I must say, at least from my perspective, you know, I think this board has done a great deal to stick to those three very important goals. And part of, part of that is, you know, working with the administration on such a project like this presentation for the budget. If we go to the next slide, budgetary objectives. If you recall, we wanted to provide a proposed preliminary budget that does not exceed the Act I index, develop a presentation framework that provides consistent means of communicating matters of school budgeting, provide detailed and summary information that also, that allow for transparent communications on facts and figures, and institutionalize a process, communications decisions that result in an annual budgetary approval. So, while, while I think that the Finance Committee has made, you know, a lot of good suggestions over the, over the months that we've been working through the budgetary process, I imagine that this, this format and this, this process that we have undertaken has really, has helped us, you know, meet the goals of not only the budgetary goals, but the board goals for transparency. If you go to the next slide, it talks about general data, and I'm just going to skip over that. These are the same slides, and you'll notice that every slide has a last updated in the far right-hand corner. So, up there, every slide has a last updated, so you'll be able to follow along with us historically. We have enrollment, we have enrollment, school buildings, technology, and then we're on to the five-year projection. So, I want to start there. This is an updated slide. And this slide, I just want to point to this area right here, APP pre-2018. APP stands for Approved Preliminary Budget. This is the budget that you approved on January, I believe January 24 of 2017, under the Act I process for approving, an approved preliminary budget. And what I then included is April update, and under this five-year projection, projected out. You may recall that if members of the Finance Committee, they had a previously review of this five-year projection, and the numbers have been updated to reflect where we are budgetarily today. So, that's what is reflected in this column. The assumptions associated with the expenditures and the revenues are highlighted here on both sides, and they're similar to the last presentation on the five-year projection. Please note that in this column here, this included a 2.5% tax increase. This column here includes a 2.5% tax increase, and it includes a 2% salary increase for all employee classes. And it's, and all those assumptions are listed here. So, when you start looking at these numbers, you'll notice that here, there were no salary increases. Salary increases were, are listed here because in order to do a projection, I made the assumption that there likely be some sort of increases historically over time, and certainly not making the decision for the board by any means, but trying to paint, you know, an appropriate picture that outlines what to expect going forward. So, in 2019, 20, 21, and 22, as it says here, there are no property taxes increases for those years. So, as you can see, if you were to take the current budget as it stands for the April update, and we'll get into more detail about this, this current budget update, you'll see that there's a residual impact of about a remaining $811,000. If you skip to the next year, as no, no tax increases are projected, you would see that we start to fall off our ability to, you know, meet what are these revenue and budgetary assumptions. So, that's just one picture. A second picture on the next slide is again associated with the five-year projection. However, this presentation or this slide shows tax increases as reflected in the upper corner here. So, similar to the last slide, this was the approved preliminary budget. This is the projected budget. So, both of these columns are the same as the last slide, but then when you start looking at 2019, 20, 21, and 22, you'll notice that we fall off just slightly compared to dramatically as, as you might see here. So, you have a $2.3 million drop-off versus a $500,000 drop-off, and that reflects a 2019 tax, with a tax increase. And those same assumptions that are, that are listed here for revenue and for expenditures are also used in this slide going forward. Okay? Now, certainly there likely be questions from the board, and we'll, after we get through the presentation, we'll take those questions back at the table. The next slide has not been updated, but it was a recommendation of the Finance Committee that we break down staff cost, being that is our largest cost as a people organization. It makes sense that, you know, staff is our basic expense. So, this, this was last updated, it was last updated on the 4/17 to reflect this asterisk, which was to represent the full Peasars amount, but the actual figures in here have not been updated to reflect where we are budgetarily. So, this will be done for the May presentation. But based on- But based on the approved preliminary budget, these were the projections going out relative to the other projected slides that you saw previously. So this will certainly be updated for your review, but as you can see, it takes you through the years and how salary, retirement, insurance, and other employee benefits impact the budget and to what percentage degree. On the next slide actually talks about the Concise Summary Report for the 2017-18 Proposed Budget. So I'll take a few minutes to talk about that. And in this, you will see that, and allow me to say a few things that will actually be presented later in some of the assumptions as they relate to this budget. But you'll see over here that this is the April update. This is the approved preliminary budget, and this column here represents the differential between the two. So it kind of shows you what changes have been made, at least in a percentage-wise. So the first obvious one is this line here, is the Basic Education and Operating Subsidy. You'll see on a future slide here that we've corrected this number to be the, to represent the actual subsidy that we're going to be receiving this year from the state, and that subsidy is the same subsidy that will hold true going forward, not being aware of any changes as per the state budget at this time. All we know is that we have a governor's proposal, but certainly no budget passed. So, and it holds true with the common practice of hold harmless, which is a typical practice for districts receiving state subsidies on an annual basis to not get less than what they got in the previous years. So in my opinion, at this point in time, or at least in general practice, that seems to be a fair assumption, and we made that correction. And another correction, you'll see under Other State Revenue, there was an increase of about $400,000 to the projected state subsidy for transportation. And I'll explain that in a future slide as well, but I just wanted to give you an idea what those changes are. If you look down then under Expenses, you'll see that there is a reduction in expenses associated with salaries and benefits, and I'll explain what that means in just a minute. You see that there were some other increases to operating expenses. I'll also explain that. And then I think the one that probably may stick out for you as board members at this point in time is this unallocated expenses line, which is a new line to this slide, and it's in a total of $1,814,758. And that is, that is so identified as the unallocated expense and a decision that, you know, I need to work with the board on to determine where that, those expenses will be charged to. And I'll explain that as we get, and I'll tell you how we arrived at that number as well. So in total, we'll have, as I'm presenting this April update, we have $107 million in revenue projected and $107 million in expenses projected with the projection of using no fund balance, and this is just, you know, looking forward to what we would likely end with in the future. Onto the next slide. This basically shows you in a graphical format the revenue summary. The next slide are the assumptions and comments associated with revenue, and I want to touch base on that for a second. You'll notice that this section here, this was the approved preliminary budget assumptions. They are the same as previously presented. The April update talks about the state subsidy increase from $6,571,000 to $6,698,000, and that increase represents the state allocated amount for '16-'17, which is this current year, and I just explained that in the previous slide. And same with transportation. It explains what we're doing there for the April update. This slide has not been updated, so this will be updated in May, and it will help, you know, our taxpayers to get a better picture of what they would likely expect as part of the real estate tax process. The next slide, this has been updated on 4/17 to reflect our request to keep things current and documented as we go through the process. But essentially, I just want to make sure that the board's aware that while Act One index exceptions were reviewed and there was a dollar amount targeted, the board on January 24th passed a resolution to not raise taxes beyond the Act One index of 2.5%, thus not being eligible to seek the exceptions. The next slide, again, is an expenditure summary, a graphical summary. The next slide talks about the assumptions related to expenditures. Again, these assumptions are the same as you seen on January 24th, same here. The next slide talks about the April update and the assumptions. So you can see, as Dr. Gattona presented this evening as an update to the budget on the ELA textbooks, this budget update for April includes the ELA text purchase reduction from $224,000 per year to $115,36 per year, or four payments to equal the $462,000. So that is, that has been refactored into and updated in this budget. The next item talks about staffing reductions. So when you looked at the slide, the Concise Summary Report that talked about a, about a 2% reduction in staffing and benefits, that is reflective of this information here. And so in the coming days, we'll be placing on the agenda for your review, the actual positions that will be impacted for the '17-'18 school year. That will, it will include one administrative position, 12 professional positions, and nine support positions. Now that's, that's what's included in this budget presentation. You will also see later on some of the other things that we need to consider for the May presentation, that there may be other positions that are added to this, but this budget, April budget update reflects those reductions. The next item, the medical reduction, there was a medical expense reduction to the overall cost increase. So what that means is while our medical costs are increasing, it was, the approved preliminary budget included a 5.2% increase, which was consistent with how the consortium was performing. However, methactin is performing much better in the medical experience than the consortium members, and based on our third look from the consortium, I have budgeted 0.6% for increase in medical for the coming '17-'18 school year. While that is probably very low compared to common industry standards, it is what is projected, it is what our cost will be based upon, and it's what we have in the budget. The next item, prescription, again, the same thing. Well, we have a reduction in the April update to the overall cost increase. So Aon, the administrator, gave us a consortium look at about 19%. Our experience has been 16.6% based on the third look. So while we did, our experience is very good on medical, it is consistent with the trend in many of the consortium members with prescription. The next item is dental cost. The Delaware Valley Healthcare Consortium is where we purchase our dental expenses from, and those costs are going from a traditionally budgeted 1% increase annually to 11.6%. I will have you know that I had our interim business manager, Dennis McCall, review the materials. I spoke several times with the administrators of the Delaware Valley Healthcare Consortium, and I am recommending that based on their review of our experience, that we use the numbers that they've given us, and that is the 11.6%. And Dennis concurs with that. When we look at the transportation services, we'll look at our cost increase in the proposed preliminary budget. We had zero proposed, as you might remember. We eliminated the position of transportation manager, and as a result of that, we need to factor back in the costs associated with the MCIU orbit software, the bus boss software, and for a student. So that dollar figure is now factored in as the cost of operating transportation. Administrative tuition has been reduced from $75,000 from the approved preliminary budget to $70,000. I reviewed their request in advance of, for the administrators in advance, and after looking at that, we're just about $69,000. So I budgeted $70,000 for that. The healthcare cash option increased from 0 to $98,000. You'll see that as we were, as I and Daniel Penza were digging deeper into the budgetary process and trying to make sure that we had everything necessary, we did recognize that in the approved preliminary budget, we did not have the dollar figure in for the cash option. The cash option is the amount that employees can receive in lieu of accepting the healthcare benefits. I can't remember exactly, it's maybe like $1,500, $1,700. I know that we've apprised you on other times about that, but I think that it's important that you know that that dollar figure is in there now, and it wasn't in there previously, so we need to account for that. The next item, through a lot of work with the building principals and discussions with Dr. Gattona and the curriculum department, there is a need for a $15,000 online math resource to help supplement the need for practice and testing of students in the classroom. I believe the program is called Alex. It's being used in several of our buildings, but this will allow us to expand that reach and provide access to a greater number of students. The next item, transportation, transportation moving expenses. It should be known that we had zero in the budget to address potential costs associated with, you know, moving desks, books, materials from Audubon to other buildings. Right now, based on some preliminary projections, I have $130,000 in there. That dollar amount also includes the projected amount of paying some of our staff who are transitioning an extra day or two, I think it's an extra two days for them to do the transitioning, and that's typically been something that's been done in the district whenever a building closure would occur and significant transition would need to take place. And just to know that, you know, the consolidation impact is still under development. I know that Ms. Gorla and many of our staff are working to address many of the matters that need to get in place before the school year starts. We also have potential movable slash or permanent walls that need to be constructed in approximately about two classrooms per the remaining four elementary buildings in order to accommodate some of the itinerant and other type of services located under pupil services. So I just wanted to give you that information. I clicked to the next slide. You'll see that the top 11 expenditures are here. This is typically a top 10 list, but I added 11 so that we had the unallocated expenses in there, so we don't lose sight of making a decision on how to best utilize those expenses. So when we talk about these assumptions on the April update, and we talk based on expenditures and the assumptions for revenue, combined, they resulted in this unallocated expenses being a number that has resulted from those changes. So what that means for us as an organization is, we would need to determine how best to utilize that money. Now, right now, it should be known that a 2.5% tax increase generally would yield about $1.77 million, whereas we have, in this budget, a 2.5% tax increase, and with all the budgetary changes in April, we have, we have what's projected here to be about $1.8 million. So with that said, it's no secret that the, you know, the board and the district have some things that they need to take care of. One of those is being, you know, addressing facility needs, and, you know, regardless of what the number is, you know, we have, we have some needs that need to get addressed. Another challenge, or something that the board might also consider is, right now, in this budget, as well as in the approved preliminary budget, we did not budget any expense for increase in salaries for any of the employee groups. So, and there may be a number of other things that we could use the $1.8 million for, but the two that I just mentioned are probably the two most prominent ones and the ones that would eat through those dollars, you know, rather quickly. So I think that's probably going to be something that we're going to need to discuss at the table once we, you know, take, go back and take our seats. Again, here's, you know, this reflects just another look at the budget numbers. You can certainly look at those and ask me questions on them. I think the most important part is the expenditures by program, the PDE 2028. Notice that there's a little note up here that the unallocated expenses are not represented in the PDE 2028. So the reason I did it that way and shared that with you is because we cannot, you know, there's not a space in the PDE 2028 to do unallocated expenses. So I'm not going to go into all of this. These changes, based on the assumptions that I've talked about, are, you know, can give you the dialogue about why the changes occurred. The cost analysis has not been updated since the 24th of January. Other considerations, and I wanted to get you to this slide. So under other considerations, this is, at the April update, considerations for the May proposed final budget. We need to address the capital borrowing. Are we, you know, right now, I can, I can reduce the capital borrowing from the 325 that's in there right now to $280,000, based on what we do with regards to any capital borrowing or not. We need to address any additional staffing matters. So like when I said, there are positions already removed from this budget. There may be other ones as we continue to work through that process. In addition, I know that Mr. McCall is working on getting us numbers on the property and casualty insurance. It's my belief, and his as well, that we're likely to see a decrease there. I don't know how significant just yet, but we will definitely have those numbers before the May Finance Committee meeting. We need to, we need to consider any other county assessment updates. We need to also consider the state budget, which we don't know yet. We, and any of those other changes or increases in county assessment, or any changes in our calculations, we're likely to have to spend more, because likely any of these increases are a result of Shenondale, so it would mean that we would have to, while we'd get increases, we'd have to take more out to fulfill the 25% escrow for that particular property for taxes paid under protest. And then, you know, we have potential contract settlements and projections and upgrade on borrow, update on borrowing for capital projects. So I think those are the things that I'm coming back to the Finance Committee and the board in May with answers to, so that I can update the budget accordingly. And last but not least, I'm just going to get to the last slide. All these other slides have not been updated. If you can see here, it presents the budget updates, and you can see that as per the 412 Finance Committee meeting recommendations, these are the slides that were updated in the presentation. So if any Finance Committee members, you know, want to know what slides are actually updated, you can look there. And we're trying to keep a running history of some of the decisions and things that we do. So that is my presentation. So that is my presentation. I can ask the Board to please take their seats back at the table, and I'll be glad to take any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
Okay. Based on the five-year projection, I guess, for the first slide, the P, I guess, the page or Slide thirteen, whatever it is, yeah, Slide thirteen, I still don't understand why we would have that showing with a no tax increase, and it just doesn't make any sense to me. But the main question I have is, is the 2% growth in salaries, that is included every year. Is that what you did, every year?
It's included in, the 2% increase in salaries is included every year on this chart, except for the approved preliminary.
Right, the current one. So every year, you're adding an amount of two, and that's across all groups?
That's across all groups. So I took the total amount of dollars in, for teachers. I mean, again, it's not 2% on the salary schedule, or 2% on steps, or anything like that. It's just 2% to the full aggregate amount.
Okay, so it's 2% for salary, like of all salaries?
Yeah, if I lump sum, if it's a million dollars, I added 2% to the million dollars, and that's what came up.
Okay. So it looks like in the five-year projection, you were using fund balance to balance out the net operating balances? Is that what you were doing there? Is that why the fund balances are dropping down?
Yes, and so on Slide thirteen, because of the negatives under the net operating line, you would see a 2.3 million dollar decrease in the fund balance, in order to show how you would pay for everything going forward. I mean, this is, it's really just a representation of what might occur. It doesn't, it tried to give a logical projection of how things may pan out based on decisions that we need to make.
When you go to the staff cost breakouts, which is, I guess, on Slide fifteen, the salaries are, you know, for lack of a better term, pretty much consistent, except with the increases. But they're not reflecting any projection enrollments by M&amp;M, are they? In other words, if our enrollment goes down considerably over those one, two, three, four, five, or six years, I would figure our staff costs would go down.
Yes, so on Slide fifteen, the only thing that I updated was the asterisk part that represents full Peasars amount. So the Finance Committee had thought that we needed to clarify that, you know, our costs are really only half of the Peasars amount versus the full amount. So we did that, but please know that the figures here do not represent any attrition in future years, nor does it represent any of the attrition or potential position eliminations that are projected in the concise summary. So these figures have not been updated since the presentation back on, I think it was the February Finance Committee meeting, if I recall correctly. So these numbers need to be updated to reflect the April update, so they're not there yet.
So, okay, so those are not even in there yet?
That's correct. So I wouldn't pay, I just want you to know that this is what it looked like based on the approved preliminary budget, and then going forward based on that, not included anything from the April update.
Okay.
So it's a difference of one point eight million dollars difference between the two.
Right, all right. Well, that was dovetailing into my next question. Okay. All right, I'm not going to take any more time. Who else has questions? Thanks.
Herb, if I can piggyback on your one question. So even though M&amp;M is showing decreases in enrollments or flattening, nothing from that study is planned to be incorporated into any out-year numbers in terms of projections or anything, right?
I wouldn't have, no, I would not have done that. I don't, I can't project the attrition.
Well, I'm just saying that...
I could make an assumption, but I did not do that.
Well, I think that's part of, when we're looking at a five-year budget model, is we have to look at that. I mean, that's part of the reason why we did these studies, to track our enrollment. And if it's something that we, I mean, if we're looking at underneath every rock for every nickel that we can find, let's just face it, you know, every year that we go forward is going to be more and more difficult, and with the future of school funding, who knows what's going to happen? I think that's something that we need to look at, or at least the Finance Committee have an idea of looking at.
That's a good point. I don't disagree with your point. I mean, that is a good point.
Yeah, and I'm not professing on how to do that.
Because our largest expense, our people are our largest expense, but not, you know, I think there's, you know, I need to do a little bit of further analysis about, you know, how much of a decrease are we getting in some of the out-years, and how does that actually correspond to classroom, class size and staffing needs? I can certainly look at that, but I haven't done that here, but that's a good suggestion.
Okay, thanks.
Two quick questions, Dr. Zerbi. On Slide sixteen, you talked about the transportation, which provided us an additional three hundred or so thousand dollars related to the transportation subsidy from the state. Just, I don't know if you have any comment. I think the Governor Wolf is proposing a reduction in this. Is there a risk in the budget plan with a, I think it was nine percent on the average transportation reduction subsidy?
Again, the Governor proposed that budget. I'm not certain where the legislature is in terms of concurring with his need to cut in that particular area. Obviously, the state's not in a good financial position, so they're going to have to make some, you know, some tough decisions. I haven't heard, one way or another, whether or not we're going to be able to keep the status quo in terms of that funding, or have it any different. That's the same with the state funding. So I guess, you know, certainly are there a risk in doing that? Until I hear something else, I don't know what else to project.
No, I agree. I just was looking to see if you had any feedback. The only assumption you can make is the information we have today, and that's fine. From the perspective of staffing reductions, the 798 on Slide twenty-four, I think, maybe I missed it, but Dr. Katona has proposed a requirement, is it, in a previous slide, the additional requirements on resources? So the teacher on assignment, I think, is for the, from the support perspective, is that in the budget, is really my question?
Yeah, that is in the budget. I planned on explaining it a little bit further when we get through the budget items this evening, but basically, the teacher on assignment costs us about forty-nine thousand dollars a year, and that is for a long-term sub to fill the role of the teacher on assignment. And so, right now, we have two teachers on assignments. We have two for math. And what we're planning to do for next year is to have one for math and have one for ELA. So the cost is going to, it's going to be a wash in terms of, so it's really not a new cost to us, but it's a cost that will continue to incur at the same rate that we are now. So it is in the budget.
Yeah, I just want to check something here, Dave. So if I'm looking at Pages thirteen and fourteen, where you show both the revenue and the expenditure lines, and then the eight hundred and eleven thousand, you showed on fifteen-two just the proposed column for, you know, the April update. Shouldn't that reconcile with the April update column on Page sixteen?
So you're referring to Slides thirteen and fourteen, the April update column, 2018. And then I'm also referring to sixteen, the April update 2018 column. They don't reconcile. Right, so the difference is, they're not the same numbers. That's accurate. And here's the difference. The difference on the April update includes 2% increase in salaries, which also then takes into account more Peasars, takes into account more Social Security. I mean, the numbers aren't the same, but they started from the same basis. So when I ran the numbers, you have the seven, you have this, so like, you look at the revenue. The revenue is different because you get more revenue from Peasars because you increase salaries. And the same with the expenditures. So in order for me to do what I think, you know, you're suggesting, is to get them in line, I'm not really sure how I would do that, because one shows, the Slide sixteen shows the budget as it's presented with no salary increases as it was in the approved preliminary budget, whereas on the five-year projections, I've included the salary increases.
Okay, but they're both labeled April update, so it's, I'm just trying to, to me, that's a little bit confusing for the public.
I recognize the challenge. Maybe what I can do is I can do a footnote on both of these and outline that, so that is, so it's, you know, more clear. But I do recognize what you're talking about, and I'm aware of it.
Yeah.
The numbers aren't wrong, it's just that you can't reconcile it back, because it doesn't have, you know, the proposed April update does not have salaries increased.
Yeah, and I guess that's a piece of my concern, too. Obviously, we've got the contract coming up, so I'm not sure why we would have projected it as a straight 2% for all the years.
Well, what I wanted to do is, I wanted to try to provide a five-year projection that would realistically represent what our challenges are. And if I were to not project any salary increases for staff in one year, that would impact the out-years. And so I would be doing the Board a disservice by not doing it the way I did it. Now, I can certainly redo the numbers if the Board so wants me to, but again, this is just an, it's just a representation of what we are looking at in terms of our challenges. While we might not give 2%, it is a, you know, it's just a number, in my opinion.
You're all just numbers.
Well, yeah, I know. But they relate to dollars and to, you know, so I understand your challenge. I can certainly represent on the five-year projections a clearer understanding of why they don't match to Slide sixteen.
Yeah, and I guess my other...
And that's a good, I'm going to take that suggestion of my own and fix that. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah. And my other, you know, I'm not sure I would show it as an operating balance of eight hundred and eleven thousand. We've got a, you know, depending on what number, we've got a hundred, between seventy and a hundred million dollars worth of master plan stuff that, you know, some portion of that, probably a greater portion of that, is going to be enacted over the years. So to ever think we have a net operating budget or balance when we've got those kinds of expenditures coming just doesn't seem right.
Yeah, I agree. That's why, if you see on Slide sixteen, I represented that as unallocated expenses. I think that, you know, as a, you know, as a Board, we need to figure out and mean to have some discussion about what that number really means to us, and how we can best utilize it. Because I told you earlier that I can't, there's no category in the PDE 2028 to, you know, list that. So my recommendation, which maybe, you know, is pretty obvious, it's either, you know, you look at your facilities needs, or you look at the staffing needs. I think, you know, both of those are, like I said, the two big chunks that will probably eat away at whatever that unallocated expenditure is. But in all fairness, you know, it's got to be clear that, and everyone needs to understand that that one point eight does represent with a 2.5% tax increase in this budget. And really, you know, you mentioned about contracts. I got to say that, you know, that's another concern of mine. You know, we are progressing forward with those discussions, and, you know, right now, until we presented this budget here this evening, and previously at the Finance Committee, did we have any indication of dollars that could be reasonably used for any of the contracts, if we so wanted to, or for other expenditures such as the facilities needs? So, you know, I was hoping that this evening, maybe the Board could give me some direction so that I have a better idea going into the contract negotiations and/or trying to plan for the facilities needs going forward, because, I'll give you a scenario. I mean, if the Board says, well, you know, we only want to do a tax increase of, say, 2%, you know, okay, so that makes a difference to what these unallocated expenses are and what we could be able to use it for. And it also changes my ability to negotiate with the groups associated with, that we're working with right now in the contract negotiations. So I just think some direction on that would be helpful, so that we can actually continue moving forward. Because waiting till June to decide what the tax increase is going to be, if at all, could really jeopardize our ability to work on any of those items over the next couple of months.
So based on this balance, is it your recommendation that we do something less than a 2.5% increase?
I'm not recommending that. I'm just, I made a suggestion that, you know, one might think that if we don't use 2.5% and some other number, it will change what that dollar amount is for the unallocated expense.
Okay.
But it is, but on a second note, right now, based on what I see and what I'm looking at in the out-year projections, and what I think we need to do in terms of our facilities, and certainly addressing any staff needs, I think it's appropriate for the Board to consider the 2.5% tax increase.
Just a couple of questions here. For the, one of the considerations was the reduction for the capital projects from the 325 to the 280. Both of those numbers, though, are inclusive of restructuring?
That is correct. It requires a restructuring, according to PFM.
Okay. And just, I think that's an important thing to put out there.
Yeah, we spoke about that at the Finance Committee, and I believe we said it's somewhere around four hundred thousand dollars, or maybe even larger than that, but like 400, 425.
To do straight borrowing?
To do straight borrowing. Which would create, you know, a different impact on our budget than the 280,000.
So in terms of guidance, I know, I'd give some there with the idea that, you know, not only would I not reduce that, but we don't want to push this any further down the road. So I don't think that you want to build in restructuring and then restructuring at a less amount. So I don't necessarily think that that's the way to go. I would be interested to see, and hopefully from the Property Committee and the work over the next month, the accurate dollar amount in terms of, for just next year, how many million we do plan to spend and what that would cost with straight borrowing. Because, you know, we probably, it's not going to be 10 million straight borrowing costing you 400. You know, so where does that number go with what you have in the budget currently? I think that'll be a helpful number.
Yeah, so the number in the budget is a 325, and that's why I didn't make the adjustment, because I didn't think we were at a place where we could take it to 280, and it didn't make much sense. But it's something we would need to consider based on what I know at that, at the time I'm presenting this. But your point well taken.
Okay. And between the slides, when you're kind of jumping back and forth, if you have the 2% or if you have the 0%, you know, it looks like a million-dollar swing. So roughly, a 2% increase is 1 million dollars, which would leave you with roughly the 800,000 for, you know, like you said, whatever unallocated expenses that may be. I think, as Scott mentioned before, we have so much in terms of property, that 800,000's almost a drop in the bucket. The only reason I do bring that up is the idea that it's still... The only reason I do bring that up is the idea that it's still eight hundred thousand dollars. So if we are going to do projects and we are going to do them in the next year, it does kinda get into the idea of, do you pay with cash now, or do you borrow and pay interest and roll things in the future years? So I do think that maybe some of that money could possibly be used as, you know, straight purchasing power there as opposed to just interest. One of the updates from the Finance Committee was the field project and how, at the time, the, the total cost wasn't inclusive of interest expense. And I think that that's something that constantly has to be on our mind of, you know, it's not just what something's gonna cost, it's gonna be the soft costs inclusive. I think that's all I have. And one other keynote was, and I think you mentioned this, was the assessment data that will be updated for the next May meeting with the most recent report in terms of the...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my intent to do that, yes.
Okay. All right, I think that's it. Thank you.
Just a basic question about layout. At the May meeting of the Finance Committee will be given the proposed budget. Will that be in the PDE format, or will it be a report of this sort? Because the reason that I ask that is that there are conflicting numbers from one section to another. And while it's obvious to some of us the differences, I'm not sure all board members would understand exactly what they would be being asked to approve. What comes to the Finance Committee is what will come to the board the following week or so. And so I was wondering what the format is that you're going to ask us to give the preliminary approval to next month?
Well, it's my, it's my intent to make sure that all the slides are updated and congruent. I mean, there's only a few that have numbers on that, that haven't been updated, just because it takes a, a, a level of effort that I didn't have time to, to get to.
Right.
But is there a recommendation from the board? I mean, I can present it any, in any manner that you feel best suited to receive it in. So if it's, if it's not in a presentation like this, and you want it in the, the standard PDE two thousand twenty-eight, I don't...
No, no, I wasn't suggesting to go to the PDE two thousand twenty-eight because I think that that's very cumbersome to deal with.
Oh, okay.
And that's the reason that I was asking that, because you seem to know that you need to put this in the form of the PDE two thousand twenty-eight once it's approved. But for purposes of the board understanding all the numbers, I think that's confusing, the PDE two thousand twenty-eight. So you'll give it to us in the abbreviated format that we have, which is just, you know, like three lines of a budget expenditure-wise, like this?
That's the concise summary report? You'll certainly have that.
Yeah. Is that what, is that what you're suggesting would, you would be presenting to us next month?
I'm suggesting next month, unless you told me otherwise, I would be updating the entire presentation to reflect all the numbers as, as I had suggested there will be...
Okay, so this whole document?
The whole document.
Okay.
I mean, that was the plan from, I think that was the plan from the very beginning when, when working through this with the Finance Committee, is just to keep a running log of, of the history behind it and making sure that we're, you know, it's clear that people can follow it along. Now, granted, you know, there's some questions about some of these slides, and I think as I first go around, you know, the, the committee as well as, as the, as the full board has recognized that there may be some shortcomings to it, and we can make some adjustments. But, you know, this is probably more information than you've had in a long time, and I hope that it's, you know, consistent with what your expectations are.
Sorry, just to jump in real quick, Andrew, to follow up on Brenda's. So we have, we officially approved the PDE document, so we, we have to have the PDE document. I think today's point is that next month, there won't be the differences from concise summary to PDE. All the numbers will tie back to an official PDE document, which is what we would approve in the May meeting, correct?
Yeah, the concise summary to the PDE two thousand twenty-eight is there. That, so the two thousand twenty-eight's been updated on your presentation. I just didn't go through the slides with you.
Right.
Because the, the, the changes there on the two thousand twenty-eight are reflected in the assumptions that I gave you, and you would be able to, you know, commonly just look at those areas. So that's all been updated. Really, the only slide that hasn't been updated, what was the, the salary one associated with benefits, Peasars and...
But we'll have the...
But that, that one will be updated then.
And for the Finance Committee meeting, and for the work session, and for the board meeting, the proposed preliminary PDE document will be...
Yeah, it needs to be, yeah. So it'll be a resolution for approval.
Can we just append that? Can we just append the official document?
Yeah, it would be two separate things. It would be the presentation.
I'll just, I'll review the process, and, and we'll make sure that we have the accurate documents, but I, I do plan to use this as well, so...
Yeah, I mean, I think to Brenda's point, you need this to understand the PDE, but the PDE has to be there as well. Yeah, okay. Sorry, Andrew.
Chris, I have one quick question. Did she have? Okay, all right. Based, going back to slide number thirty-three, which was the expenditures on, on the PDE form for student transportation services, going under the salaries, we went from a budgeted for this year of two fifty-five to, down to one sixty-seven, seven, seven, nine. Then if you go down two lines, you even see the added purchase professional and technical services, which of course is the IU orbits for student. The difference in the salaries from this current year, two thousand seventeen, to next year, what is that? Is that one person, two people? What is the one sixty-seven, seven, seven, nine for?
You're on slide thirty-three?
Yes.
And, and you're looking at...
The first line under transportation.
Twenty-seven hundred?
Twenty-seven hundred, correct. So if we don't, you don't know that, then I need, that's fine, I just, as a follow-up that would be great. Because I wanna know what those salaries are for, that one sixty-seven, seven, seven, nine. Who those people are.
Sure.
Because we do not have a Director of Transportation Services anymore, which was in the actual two thousand fifteen budget. You can see that.
Correct.
And you can see something in two thousand sixteen, don't know what that is. And then in two thousand seventeen, okay, and then it drops down even more. The other thing is, is with the runnings of, with the reduction of one school for two thousand eighteen, the actual purchase services, which is of course the busing by first student, does not seem to have dropped. It actually increased by sixty thousand for budgeting purposes. I would've thought that number would have been reduced. So that needs to be looked at a little bit more, okay? This is all just getting to the point of, you know, trimming this budget where we need to trim it. And, I mean, we, you know, we just closed an elementary school. Some of this stuff, I feel, should be reflected in there, okay? We don't, if I, if I think I know who those staffing is for the one sixty-seven, seven, seven, nine, I wanna know what those people are gonna be doing now. Since we're bringing on the IU, okay, those two ladies in here who are gonna be doing a lot of this work, okay, I wanna know what, what those other staffing are gonna do. And then also with the bus runs, I wanna know why they're going up sixty thousand dollars when I think they should be dropping about a hundred and twenty. So, okay? Just as food for thought into that part.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have something? Okay. Go ahead, Mike. Sorry, I didn't remember. In terms of the student transportation, the five hundred line, part of that increase is, I think it was in the presentation too, was the additional software that came along with it, right? The, the three different, the orbits, the bus boss, and the other three. There was three numbers that added to the increase of the...
Right, that's the one thirty-two double oh seven.
Right.
And then you add, and then you're looking at that, the salary, that one sixty-seven, seven, seven, nine, which we pre-approved, okay? That dropped from two fifty-five to nine six seven. I wanna know what that's, one sixty-seven, what that residual amount is for.
Oh, that was the three, okay. And I did have a question, I forgot, as I was going through my notes here. On slide forty-one is the building request projects, and this is kind of a combined finance and property question. In the property meeting, wasn't this what we were talking about in terms of having to go back to the principals to get? But isn't this, wasn't this their initial request? And I know that this document, you know, doesn't mean a whole lot in terms of what's going to be done or what's not going to be done. But wasn't this the principal request at the time? Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
On slide forty-one?
Yeah, I'm on there.
The, where did this, what, what was this? Who, who, where the...
So on an annual, on an annual basis, as part of the budgeting process, building principals will make requests to have projects completed. So as you can see here, there's some things related to painting of certain rooms, there's, you know, wall issues, there's, these are the things that are typically determined by the building principal that would likely be used that, as this list would be, to be non-capital related, but, but items that we would expend in, in the budget. However, in the, in the past, we've used the capital reserve to, to take care of some of these items. But as part of our budgetary discussions, these items here were the ones that would be used for the expenditures out of the operating budget going forward versus being a part of the capital plan. So those highlighted here are now moved over to the capital budget, and those not highlighted are the residual items from the principal's request.
Okay, so I understood this part, because we've seen this back in January. How does that differ to the discussion at the Property Committee this month that we just had, where there was the talk about, I believe it was Dan from Fidevia and Mark Fritz had, had mentioned going back to the principals to get a list? What was that principal list?
It's more, it's more associated with the projects that are slated for, under the facility assessment, as well as are there any other curricular and/or operational matters that they want to have considered in the overall master plan. So when we talk about taking some of these items here, or all these items in yellow, as well as the items in the facilities assessment, we wanna include their input as, in consideration of the master plan for each of those campuses going forward.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? You know, I was thinking a bit more about the, the M and M study and looking at the projections out. You know, when we look at these five-year projections, we are assuming a lot of things are just staying static and growing, or, you know, just annual increases. I think if we take the M and M study, I think that's, it's a good step in the right direction in the sense that we're looking at the dynamics of our school district from a certain perspective. So if we take what M and M recommended to be the, the one they feel will most likely happen, the, you know, the middle one, and use that here, and start incorporating that into budget discussions, I think it'll also keep us thinking about our school district in a more dynamic fashion. Because if something else changes, you know, if all of a sudden we have, we see signs that there's gonna be some rapid growth, you know, these normal budget numbers wouldn't really account for that either. So for, we're looking at projections or where enrollment's going long-term, whether it's tracking with M and M, which is our, our best reference now, or we see signs that it's going differently, you know, we, we don't wanna get caught off-guard like some of the other school districts that all of a sudden realize, hey, we gotta build a school, or we gotta close two schools, or, or things like that. From what's the finance impact?
Yeah, I certainly, I think there's some credibility to, you know, Mr. Roth's initial suggestion, because it, you know, but I, I have not looked long-term in terms of what those enrollment figures might mean to us in, in terms of our staffing and other needs. So it's something that, you know, I plan to do.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Appreciate it.
I don't, Dr. Zerbi, you had said that you were hoping for some direction, like where you're, are you going to two-point-five? Are you going to two percent? It sounds like you still have no direction.
It sounds that way.
So I will add to that. I will give you some direction from my point of view. We closed a school to be efficient, but we've also let go some things, mainly our facilities. And I don't wanna get into contract negotiation talks because it's not the appropriate time, but we do have a staff to take care of in many ways, whether it be perks that cost money, but not as much as salary. But we do, you know, all you have to do is look at Montgomery County salaries, and we have to think about Montgomery County salaries and our facilities. So although nobody wants to raise taxes, I believe we have a lot of things to pay for to keep our district going. And I think you do need, I'm with you on looking at the two-point-five. If we could go a tiny bit lower, great, but it was already hard for me to say not to go above the ACT index just because we have a school to run and we need funds. So my direction is, I'm comfortable with the two-point-five, but just like Mr. Roth always says, we're always looking for places that we can work on that budget.
Does anybody have issues with continuing the assumption of two-point-five in the budget, to continue to build the budget on?
I don't, I don't have specific issues with it, but I do think that we should be looking at what we actually need to spend and seeing if we can't reduce that below the two-point-five.
Yeah, I, I, I think there's one of two decisions that, that is before the board. When we look at some of the comments associated with, you know, looking at what our, our spend is in terms of the, the annual operation. So, you know, we're talking about supply, staffing, all those types of things. And then we get to some, you know, unallocated expense dollar figure. So if we were able to find other, you know, savings that would allow us to not be a part of the annual operating budget, but they were actually allocated back into, say, the fund that would also see revenue going, revenue going to address the one, one object that people are very cognizant of, which is the facilities, you know, would that be, you know, is, is that the direction that we would go? Or are we going in the direction where we would, we would want to, whatever savings we can find, we would reduce the, the tax revenue associated with, with, with that increase? Because I think, I think they're, I think the messages are different when we look at the long-term. So the, the one message is, we wanna be fiscally prudent and responsible, and we wanna do that regardless of whether we have a two-point-five percent tax increase or some other number. The other part of that is, you know, by, by going less than a two-point-five percent tax increase, the next year, while you'll be, you'll be challenged again with making a decision on, on the tax increase, you, you will have that much less, whatever the, the differential is that you didn't raise in order to meet some of your other goals. And some of those other goals, I think Ms. Reese, you know, mentioned two of them, you know, dealing with the staffing and dealing with our facilities. So the, so the, the challenge is, in my opinion, you know, we might be able to deal with some of the facility pieces by borrowing and, and paying for things afterwards or down the road, but it may, it may be more fiscally responsible to, you know, to have, you know, the, the proper revenue stream in order to take care of those things on a, on a, on an annual basis. And by, by reducing the tax increase, you, you reduce your access to any, any additional funds. And unfortunately, I'm not, I gotta tell you, I'm not a fan of the tax increase, but I gotta look at this thing mathematically, and I gotta look at running the organization. And two of our biggest things, our facilities and our teachers, are, are, are the challenge here. And if we don't make good decisions today, it's gonna make it harder for decisions in the future. So, you know, I don't know if that makes sense for everybody, but, you know, that's the, kinda just where I'm looking at it right now, and I want you to consider that as you're thinking about, you know, whether it should be something less than two-point-five. Even, even if we can reduce our, our actual operating expenditures, shouldn't that money go back into, you know, dealing with more of the, of the facilities projects?
You know, one of the things that we talked about is, is the, you know, maintenance of our, the upkeep of our facilities. And one thing we cut out of this budget is the one thing that we actually said we were going to do, and that's start escrowing money for the fields. So that in ten years, we will have money saved up to do the necessary maintenance we need to on these brand-new, state-of-the-art field systems. So if we by chance can find a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in this hundred-million-dollar budget, the first thing I would say is put it back into that escrow so that we don't have this problem ten years from now, whatever board member... whatever board members are sitting here, and having to deal with, okay, well, we got, our, our fields are coming apart and we have no money to fix them, because we have been dumping so much money into other things, and Peeters is going through the roof, is going crazy, or whatever's happening 10 years from now. Who knows what school funding will be in 10 years? But we have that ability to do that now, to set that in perpetual motion, $117,000 a year. That's not very much money out of a $100 million budget. And to me, just the simple, if we can find out what the salaries for the, for the transportation services, what those were for, you know, is there anything to trim out of there? Well, there's some of it right there. So, you know, while I'm not in favor of a, of any tax increase that is not necessary, it's clear that this district has to have some, some sort of tax increases in order to fund the necessary basic repairs to the buildings that we have. The facilities we have are, I mean, we, you saw that with the A&amp;M study reported. It's been neglected for way too long, and I don't, I think we need to turn, flip that around and start actually preventing that stuff from happening and taking corrections on those matters, so we don't run into problems of a school falling apart.
I mean, listen, nobody wants tax increases, and I, I think we want to keep the increase as low as possible, but, you know, the economics are the economics that we've got to deal with, especially with, as Herb so eloquently put it. I do agree that we should be sticking stuff aside. There's a life cycle to those fields, whether we get 10 years out of them, or 15 years out of them, depending on, it'll all be dependent on how you maintain them throughout the period. If you neglect them, they'll go faster. If you take care of them appropriately, then they'll maybe last a year or two longer. You know, the gorilla in the room isn't this year. The gorilla in the room is in 2019 or 2020, and we just went through the school closure discussions, but this board is going to be faced with looking at another school closure. We didn't deal with the capacity issues completely with the closure of Audubon. That dovetails very clearly into any expenditure that you would put on, you know, and I'll name Arrowhead, because that was one of the two schools. And this board has to be thinking long-term, that that's a very viable possibility and/or probability that both the board and the public are going to have to deal with. The five-year projections with increases or without increases are indicative. There could be some things that change. We may get a little more revenue here. We may have some more expenditures. The state may cuss funding. We don't know. But the big gorilla in the room is going to be the potential of an additional school closing at some point, maybe not '19, probably '20 or '21, if the M&amp;M numbers, you know, true out long-term. So, I mean, I, you know, I think for this year, with all of the expenditures we have, I can support the 2.5%. Brenda said it correctly. If we can find additional savings, we ought to see those. And then my opinion is, they should be put towards not borrowing as much money, or pre-planning so we don't have to borrow as much money. There's a number of things that we could, we could do. So I mean, I mean, that's my two cents. You know, we've neglected facilities for a long, long time. Maybe we gave more increases, and we should have, for teacher salaries, and some of that money should have been allocated towards facilities. I don't know. I don't think that's for this board to determine. We've got to look at the path forward and, you know, the economics that the school district's going to be facing.
Just from a PDE standpoint here, Dave, looking for a direction, so you need to come in front with us with a, you know, proposed final budget. We have the $1.8 million that we keep talking about. The two common themes are the contracts and the facilities. Do they become a certain type of placeholder almost, or how do, how do you incorporate? If we go ahead with the 2.5%, but we don't have a settled teacher's contract before the final, right, how do we go about the logistics of that?
I think there's, there's a number of ways to do it, certainly. If it's, it's, if the board is, is interested in using some, some or a large portion of those dollars to address facilities, we can, we can add that to one of the facility line items as a budgeted expense, in hopes that, you know, we would manage that as, as the year progresses to deal with a multitude of potential issues. And then we just do budgetary transfers for things that might be, might be different. Another way to do that is, we have a, we typically budget $200,000 annually for, I think it's called budgetary reserve, and that, we could put the money there, because that would, that's typically, that's really an allocated expense. We're budgeting amount, but we don't, we don't, we don't expend that until it's actually expended. So those are just two things that I could think of at this point in time, but, but likely we're going to need to place it in a location, and it's not, and until the contracts are settled, it's not my recommendation to put it in salaries.
Okay. That was kind of one of those things where I'm asking a question that I already know the answer to. It'd be my preference that we do put that money forward into facilities as a placeholder, however you want to do it. And I imagine that when the contract settles, we would have a budgetary transfer that we would need to approve, that would change the funds from one to the other. The idea behind that being, you know, we talked about $10 million. We're not going to borrow $10 million in the first, but are we going to need maybe $1.8 million next year for facilities? My guess is probably yes. So, I mean, we're talking about $60, $70 million for facilities, and this is 1.8. I think we need it. So that would be my 2.5 I would support.
Chris, just real quick, I, I support, as I mentioned in the finance committee, the 2.5, and spoke to those reasons why, but I just want to point out to all, because it's, we're looking at it from this, this year as the ability to look at our budget with a little bit of a longer focus. So we have this five-year focus. We, we have assumptions there. They can be tweaked, but at least to provide some view of the future, which we didn't have voting last year. So this is much better process. But I want to point out, no matter what the assumptions are on this, on the salaries, on the staff, the retirement, obviously, it does get influenced by the, the 2% of not in there or not, but the, the full retirement, Peeters is preliminary at 12.9, projected to be 17.4 by 2022. So it's $4.5 million, half of it is ours. So there is a known expense of $2.2 million over the next five years. So I want to point out that there are some, there's not, there are discretionary expenses here, and there are fixed costs coming.
Any other comments? Okay. From my perspective, I think the, keeping the budget on track for the 2.5 is kind of the, the cap we want to work towards, and if we do find ways to reduce it, you know, I think in the past, there's been talks about reducing supplies to classrooms and all that to try to get things. I think, from my perspective, it's kind of embarrassing how much we rely on home and school and families to bring in supplies that we should be, because it's been cut so thin over the years. So, you know, when we're talking about trying to come in under the 2.5, you know, I personally don't want to see those type of expenses, you know, going up. The other thing is, you know, we got, we got a lot of uncertainty around those two big expenses. So, you know, we're, we're having good discussions with all, all the labor groups around, all the contracts and all that, and, you know, today, we can't say we're, we're going to land on those things, so there's a lot more good discussions to happen. Also, you know, I think we feel like today, we have an understanding of, we have to spend a lot of money in the next five years on our facilities, but to really work over the next month or so to nail that down, to say, what do we need to spend over the summer and next school year, with the priority over making the transition into the elementary schools as seamless as possible, plus what's critical in the other buildings, so that we can figure out with that, that 1.8, where do we, where do we land across those, those two big areas? So, you know, I think, at least the feedback I've gotten from people on the finance committee and here at the board tonight is the, you know, the new way of presenting things, and it has a lot of input. I know Michael and others have given a lot of input into this format and processes. It's a lot better than what it used to be. So, you know, I'd like to thank everybody who gave input into that, and I'd like to thank you for pulling that together with a business manager at hand. So I know you, that, that presents some challenges as well. So thanks to everybody who worked to put this together, so that the, the non-finance people have a better understanding of how the numbers are brought together. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much. If it's okay, I'll go on to the rest of the agenda. At the voting meeting, we'll also have four presentations as well. The school transition update from Ms. Gorla. She does plan to come before the board and give you a, an overview of the sections and the class sizes and all that information, so she's prepared to have those discussions. My entire cabinet will be helping me present the strategic planning update, and the Methacton High School Fields Project, I'll be presenting that as well. And then Arrowhead Home and School will be on hand to present, and we'll probably move them first. So I just want to change that. There will be reports. We move on to the agenda. There will be a public comment, board minutes, and then we're on to fiscal items. So there is a list of bills, treasury report, budgetary transfers. Are there any questions about any of those three items at this point? Okay? If not, the bid summary. Are there any questions on the bid summary? Basically, on an annual basis, the, with the district participates with the IU and with the, and does their own bids for supplies. And so I know that there were some questions from the finance committee regarding this, and I was, I was hoping that I could provide some additional information, and I'll try to do that now. But essentially, there are, as posted to the agenda for '17, '18, there are bids in the amount of $289,790.43. That includes a, an IU bid of $106,573, and a Methacton bid of $183,216. And some of the questions were associated with, generally associated with, you know, why are there two bids? Is, is one part of another? And, and I got the clarification on that for the, the committee, and shared with the whole board here this evening. But basically, the IU provides a list of items that they put out for bid. The district takes advantage of those items that are on their bid list, but does not include all the materials or, or the supplies that our teachers are requesting, nor does it include all of, all of the materials that we purchase in one district year. So for example, as you, as you might know, that in 2016, the bids were, for the IU were $88,055, and for the Methacton bid, at the same time, $192,000, for a total bid of $280,601. That's for 2016, '17, the current operating year. Or about $9,000 less than they are this year. Another piece of information that I think that the, the committee was, was looking for, and I hope I can answer, is the district's been using the IU supply bid list for, for a little over 10 years now, and the bids represent about 1,200 items, and they also include all the shipping associated with those items. The district does create their own bid process to gain pricing on items not covered under the IU bid, for items historically problematic in specific, with specific brand names and, and other materials. So for example, historically, while there might be some products on the IU bid that the district used to take advantage of, they no longer do, because when the materials come in with the lowest bidder, and it doesn't create, it's not based on the brand name requested by the, by the teacher, those, those materials are sometimes inferior for the purpose that the teacher wants to use them with, with the class on. And so that's part of, of the dilemma. So over the years, we've learned which products were best suited for bids by Methacton specifying brand names, and different vendors bid on those brand names, so we do get competitive pricing. I think, you know, the district does spend about $1 million in general supplies a year, so that, that includes all the items in the 610 object. But if we dig a little deeper, we budgeted about $453,000 for instructional supplies, and about another $25,000 for nursing supplies, which are both the areas of supplies that the IU and the Methacton bid list consume. So when you look at the supplies of the entire district, you know, the, the bids look like a small number to what we actually purchase, but if you look at what the bids are designed to help us with, are the instructional costs and, and nursing supplies. So we basically put out the bid 50% of what we purchase instructional supplies-wise. And so while, while it might, you know, one could concede that we, we might be able to do a little bit better on that, and I can certainly look into it, I just wanted to give you that information for your, for your understanding. That's all I have in, in terms of that, at this point. Are there any other questions?
Just, Dave, you know, does it make sense, and I know the bid summary would be attached, but should we just put the total amount of the bid summary on the line there, similar to how we do some of the other things on the page? And that way, at least people, the public can see that amount, and if they want to go look at the details, they can do that.
We'll add both of the, both of the line items in a total.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions on the, the bids? If not, we'll move on to North.
Dave, just real quick, I just want to say thank you, because I did have a lot of those questions there, and I think that that, that review that you gave us was very helpful. So thank you.
The next item, is there anybody else? I don't want to jump ahead. The next item is a North Monco Technical Career Center budget. There are several items to approve. Some of them are for the increases and costs associated directly with Methacton. Others are, are the budgets associated with the operation of the, of North Monco Career Tech Center, but have no cost to the district. Are there any questions on any of those items?
Dr. Zerbi, I, there was a question about the debt service payments for, under that category, because it didn't seem to tie, did you?
Yeah, I did not get the information yet, but I have it on my request, so I should get that to you before we have to vote on this.
Thank you.
Is that something I can ask tomorrow night, or help at all tomorrow night with our, we have the meeting tomorrow night? Or not really?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you want to get into all that. Let me just contact them and, and work through that, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
It's okay. It's not a big issue. It's just, it's just a clarity thing.
Okay.
Any other questions on the VOTAC? If not, we'll, we'll get the debt service information and we'll move on. The next item, based on discussions at the finance committee, I added this item F, Major and Mastro contracts. So we want to approve a one-year extension to the contract with Major and Mastro LLC, Certified Public Accountants, to perform audit services for the year ending June 30, 2017, at a cost of $18,000. And that is the cost of their audit for this past year. And in the same, in the same is true, I want to tell you that we've been talking with the Home and School Association, and we're seeking to have them also do audits for the coordinating council. Right now, based on, on just preliminary projections, that may be about $4,000. That's not listed here. We're not asking for your approval on that, on that next week, because I need to get more details, and I need to get more information from the home and schools, but that is, that is the intent, to work with them. And I need to have a dialogue with them to finalize all that.
I just wanted to make one item of note here with this. Since these meetings are recorded, this was a kind of a conversation that went back and forth at the finance meeting here. It did not gain enough support to look for a, a new RFP to, to look at this this year. And basically, the, the idea was, without a Director of Business Services, that maybe now is not the best time. We do plan in the future to issue an RFP for this service. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was known to the public.
Dr. Zerbi, has the company agreed to the fee?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, this, we, we have an engagement letter. I'll... I'll include that as part of my next weekly memo. There are no other questions about auditing services. We'll move on to the next item, Special Education Supervisory Support Services. We're asking the board to approve retroactively. Now, we don't normally do this, but we do need, we did need to get this in place. So we're asking for retroactive approval of Special Education Supervisory Support for Methacton High School. And this is specifically to replace the resignation, or the person leaving due to a resignation at the high school. So the service is provided by Montgomery County Intermediate Unit at a cost of $450 per day from April 18th through June 30th, at a total cost not to exceed $15,000. And just to give you an idea, right now, the agreed-upon schedule is four half-days per week with another full day being added on at the end of, at the end of April for the remainder of the time. That should give you an idea of, you know, where we're at and the type of coverage. And we feel that that coverage is appropriate, and it works on having coverage throughout the entire week for help with running IAPs and working with the other administrative staff. Are there any questions related to that?
Just real quick, I assume there's a budget offset for the resignation?
Yes. I don't, I believe it's, this is actually be cheaper, this is actually be less expensive than the employee.
I would think so. I think it would be less, but maybe you wanna note the budget offset is X or something like that. I mean, if it's a lot of trouble.
No, we don't normally do that. But, you know, it's, I mean, it's the item, you're approving the expense, the offset is gonna be the offset. We're eventually gonna fill the position in full at a future date.
I get that. Okay.
It is a curiosity.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, is it more efficient a way to do it?
The next item is the MC IU Cost Plan. This is to approve the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit District Cost Plan in the amount of $519,972 for the 2018, 1718 school year. And basically, what this includes is, this includes the anticipated cost based on the current enrollment and the current services, itinerant services provided by the IU today for those students, and what the cost is, cost will be for assistive technology, hearing and vision, speech, and work-study and other services. Any questions related to that? If not, we'll go on to item number 10, Personnel. Dr. Hahn?
This week, we have, we have one approval of a job description. I believe it was discussed several times tonight, and it's one of the job descriptions that will be coming before you next week. It's for the Instructional Support Teacher on Assignment that's going to replace one of the math now. So in numbers-wise, it's a wash as far as how many teachers on assignment we have for those types of positions. We had one resignation classified for your approval. We have one long-term substitute classified. We have two change of status professional. One is the extension of Cindy Golden in her math specialist, in her math support position. And the other one is a placeholder for the job description that we just talked about. I'm not sure we're gonna have anybody in there for next week.
Yes, I think we may just remove that. We still wanna do that, but we are, we don't have the interview process rolling to where we need to. So, and just for the clarification, the two teacher on assignments were one-year appointments when they were originally approved. So last year, you extended that same, those same appointments for this year. And then we're just asking you to extend Ms. Golden's appointment for next year and then hire, you know, create, approve the job description and then hire this new person, which again, will cost us a long-term sub.
We have one uncompensated leave classified for your approval. We have two supplemental contracts. We have one addition to our classified substitute list and the list of volunteers as attached.
And please know that, as I mentioned in the budget presentation, likely by the end of the day, on Thursday of this week, that any positions that are to be considered for elimination will be posted live on the agenda. And they'll be for your consideration. Next on the agenda is curriculum and programs. Dr. Katona, you went through all these materials earlier this evening. Are there any other questions for Dr. Katona on the items? If not, we'll move on to the next. We have ESL Summer Enrichment Program. Just so you know, I'm going to add the approximate cost to the line item. It's going to be approximately $6,000. And that's gonna be funded out of the Title III grant. And basically, it's the ESL Summer Enrichment Program, and it's dependent on the total number of students enrolled. But based on Dr. Engstad's estimates, it's gonna be about $6,000. The next on the agenda, if there are no questions on that one, under policy, there are 12 policies for first reading. I think that one of them, I still have to do some work on. Or have to, yeah, I still have to do some work on Policy 717. I gotta get some additional information on. And then on second reading, there will be five policies for your review and, or for your approval at the board meeting. Any questions on policy matters? If not, on under others, gifts and donations. Accept a gift from Bundy Flute, from Patrick Bane, for the Instrumental Department at Eagleville in the amount of $150. There are three trips listed. Approve a trip for one student qualifying for competition in the PMEA State Conference in Erie on April 19th through the 22nd. Cost to the district $731 for travel and lodging and $290 for one substitute for a total of two days. The next one is approve a trip for two students qualifying for competition in the FBLA National Leadership Conference in Anaheim, California. The cost to the district $1,700 for travel and lodging. The third one, approve a German-American partnership program exchange for Methacton High School, German students, for approximately June 20th and approximately for two weeks. There's no cost to the districts. And it's saying approximately because they're still debating on how that, that travel plans will land in terms of airfare and et cetera. Are there no questions on that? Dates for board members' consideration are on there, and there's old business, new business, and courtesy of the floor, and then adjournment.
Any questions before we open up? Courtesy of the floor. Okay. Anybody, public comment? All right. Motion to adjourn the meeting, second. All those in favor? Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you coming up.